Hello. My name is Cheryl Freund, and I am the moderator for tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. On behalf of the Faribault branch of the American Association of University Women hosting this event, I welcome the candidates, members of the audience, and those viewing this forum being broadcast live on FCTV. The candidates are incumbents John Bellingham, Courtney Cavalier, Lee Lichtenberg, and Chad Wolfe. Challengers are Damian Baum, Linda Boudreau, Michael Cross, Tom Hanson, and Linda Moore. So, welcome all of you. Mr. Hanson, I do believe is not here. He did not respond to our invitation. But all the rest of you, welcome this evening. There are four positions that are currently open. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce him or herself and explain why he or she is running for the school board. Then candidates will be given one minute to answer questions from the audience. There are timekeepers in the audience who will give a warning sign to candidates close to their time limit, and it looks like that it's a 15 seconds is your warning. And then a sign of time will tell you that you must conclude your comments. Now, candidates, please speak loudly into your microphone and project your voice way out to the audience. And also, please be careful not to touch your microphone because I hear that when you do that, it goes kind of mute or something so we can't hear you as well. So, we want to hear everything you have to say. Okay. Those present in the audience are invited to write questions on a slip of paper provided by the volunteers, who will collect them and give them to me to be asked of the candidates. As the moderator, I will vary which candidates begin the round of questioning so that each candidate gets an equal opportunity to respond. Audiences, please be respectful. Hold your applause for the conclusion of the forum. Thank you very much. Now for opening statements. In two minutes, please introduce yourself and explain why you are a candidate for the Faribault Public School Board. And I will begin with, you're all alphabetical, and that's the way I like it as a teacher. And by the way, I have to say, these are incredible questions you people came up with. All right. So, we're going to start with Damian, please. And so, please talk about yourself and why you are running for the school board.
My name is Damian Baum. I've lived in Faribault since 1999. My wife, April, and I have three kids that are currently in Faribault Public Schools, an 11th grader, a 10th grader, and a 6th grader. And they are my primary reason I'm running for school board. I am, you know, I am a parent, like all the other parents in Faribault Public Schools, that wants our schools to be the best they can be. I'm concerned about their education. I am concerned about making our schools successful. And I have a unique set of skills that I think can be helpful to our schools. I've been in technology all my life. I've been in IT, both in corporate America, and I spent 10 years in K-12 education, including the, during COVID. So, I saw firsthand the struggles in the classroom, the struggles with the students, both in education and technology. You'll have to forgive me, my brain's still thawing. I was helping the 6th grade football players tonight with their last practice of the year. But, you know, these kids are important, not only to our community, but to our future. And I really feel compelled to be out there to make sure that we're providing an education, that we're providing these kids with an opportunity to be successful in life. And, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. My name is John Bellingham. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Boudreau. I moved to Faribault in 1977 upon accepting a teaching position. I am married and have a son and a daughter who are proud graduates of Faribault Public Schools, and also a son-in-law who is a proud graduate of Faribault Public Schools. I have two grandchildren who attend Faribault Public Schools as well. I proudly taught and coached for over 35 years in the Faribault Public School System. I also taught two years in the parochial school system. It's now called Divine Mercy. At that time, it was CCS. And also coached at Bethlehem Academy for three years. I currently serve as vice chair on the Faribault School Board. I'm on the Buckham West Board of Directors. I work as a Rice County Jury Attendant, and I am a member of the Faribault Booster Club and a member of the Rice County Historical Society. I was appointed to the Minnesota Board of Teaching in 2011, and I continued that for six and a half years, and I chaired that board for five years. I'm running for school board, continue to run for school board to serve the Faribault community. I believe my experience in education as a teacher and school board member, being an involved community member, and connections within the community and state assist me in making sound decisions. I'm on the district's Finance, Policy, Insurance, and Negotiations Committee, as well as I'm on the Community Education Advisory Council and Agricultural Advisory Committee. I'm the board liaison to the Minnesota State High School League. I'm a person of principle and make decisions with research, data, and integrity. I focus on what's best for the community, students, and Faribault Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boudreau.
Thank you. I'm Linda Boudreau. My family ancestry includes five generations of Faribault High School graduates with grandkids enrolled at Faribault Public Schools. I have undergrad degrees in Business Administration and Government Relations. I have developed lifelong Faribault connections through various involvements, including as a school, community, and church volunteer, county employee, a police reserve officer, an election judge, community youth coach, yoga class instructor, and more. I have work experience at all levels of government. Formerly, I served five terms in the Minnesota House, representing Faribault and surrounding counties. While there, I chaired the Health and Human Service Policy Committee, and I was Speaker Pro Tem. Before my retirement, I provided constituent services and community outreach for a member of Congress, U.S. Congress. The skills I have learned professionally, along with my community and faith connections, prepare me well to serve on the Faribault School Board. I believe that education is the pathway for students to become responsible adults, independent thinkers, good citizens, and tomorrow's leaders. But the education pathway must embrace academic achievement that improves student proficiency scores in math, reading, and science, and equal opportunities for all students regardless of race, skin color, gender, religion, or politics, and partnering with parents through intentional engagement and increased transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cavalier.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Courtney Cavalier. I currently serve on the school board, and I'd really like to thank AAUW for hosting us again tonight. I think it's really important that we continue to have forums like this so we can hear from each other and talk with one another. So, thank you. I've lived here in Faribault. This is my 19th year. My husband, Matt, and I moved here when we accepted jobs at Shattuck St. Mary's. Before that, I was a reading specialist working with kids who were really struggling in schools. I worked in both private and public schools, at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. I earned my master's degree in education focusing on child and human development before I came out here to Minnesota. And since then, we've had two children, twin boys, they're 11 years old, who were born here. We're really grateful that they're growing up here in Faribault. It's a wonderful town. It's a wonderful city with a lot of diverse opportunities, and we've been really grateful for the foundation Faribault Public Schools has given them. I've been working in schools for 25 years, working with all kinds of students, in all kinds of settings, and all kinds of families. About 13 years ago, I moved into school administration, and in doing so, I've been responsible for managing academic programs and budgets, overseeing teachers and principals, helping students perform well, and overseeing specialty and innovative programs, like programs in STEM and English language learning, and honors, and learning support, things that span a broad spectrum of the kinds of things that students here in Faribault are interested in. I've also had the opportunity to work with teachers and schools overseas, learning about what schools look like in other countries besides ours. And all of these information, all of these experiences inform my work on the school board. I really would like to continue to grow and learn based on the things we've gone through over the last couple of years, and I hope that I'll have a chance to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross.
Well, as the sign says, my name is Mike Cross. I'm the father of four. You guys. I'm the father of four. All of my kids and myself have gone to the Faribault Public School Systems. I, myself, left my senior year and graduated in high school and college in Arizona due to some family situations. We moved back here in 2014. Since then, my son has graduated two years ago. I do have a daughter in 8th grade, and like Damian said, I want to see, I want to get involved because my daughter's still in school. I want her to get a well-rounded education. I presently sit on the STEM School Chair, STEM School Board as a STEM, as a chair. I've been on that four and a half years. I feel my experience there can propel over here and help it out here. I'm just basically for the basics. I'm a pretty simple guy, pretty common sense guy. We need the reading, writing, arithmetic back. We need to get back to the basics. We need to think of the kids first, and we need to think of the kids' safety. I'm not sure that safety in the schools is all what it should be just because of what goes on in other towns. I don't want to be that town. That's basically all I have to say. If you want to vote common sense, I'm the guy. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I do have one more thing. I'd like to say hi to my 3rd grade teacher, Ms. Quail, who's in the room. 1969.
Hi, hello. Ms. Lichtenberg.
Hi, I'm LeAnn Lichtenberg. And it's on. There. How about that? Nope. All right. Yep, it's on. All right. Can't get much closer than that, right? Um... How about? There we go. All right. All right. My name is LeAnn Lichtenberg, and I'm running for the school board because I have worked in the schools for over 30 years, first as an elementary teacher for 24 years, and later as the district assessment coordinator, and I finished up my career as a substitute principal. I really feel like I have a lot of foundational knowledge that can help keep moving our schools forward and that can help support our teachers, our staff, and our parents. My own children, my four children, went through the Faribault Public Schools and had a great experience. I'm anticipating that my grandchildren will go through Faribault Public Schools, and so I want the school system to remain strong and to work for a high academic school district that will bring parents back to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Thank you to the, can you hear me? Thank you to the AAUW for allowing us to present tonight. I'm Linda Moore, and I'm running for Faribault Public School Board. I'm a lifelong resident of the Faribault area. I graduated with honors from Faribault Senior High School, and both of our children also graduated from the Faribault Public Schools. When my children were in school, I served on the PTA and volunteered in Mrs. Cooper's reading class. I have always been concerned about student achievement, and because of this, I co-founded the Language Learning Center of Faribault, where we gave many tutoring scholarships to students in the area who are struggling academically. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology, a master's in sociology, and a doctorate in educational leadership. I am currently part of the adjunct faculty at a Minnesota Christian Liberal Arts College. I am running for school board because I care about the children and parents in our community, as well as our teachers. I want our children to have the best opportunity for a successful life. Therefore, our district must focus on teaching the basics of reading, writing, math, science, and history without political, racial, or sexual undertones. The number-one issue that I am concerned with is the latest proficiency test scores as reported by the Minnesota Department of Education. Therefore, my emphasis is to concentrate our resources on the fundamentals of reading, writing, math, and so forth. Education is vital for students to become independent thinkers, responsible adults, and future leaders. We need to get back to the basics. Also, I believe in transparency within our public schools, especially with the curriculum, teaching materials, funding, and program disbursements. And this is for parents, voters, and taxpayers. And I support empowering parents' rights and voices over political entities and outside forces. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolfe.
Hi, I'm Chad Wolfe. Can you hear me? Sorry. Thank you. I'm Chad Wolfe. Thank you for having us, to the members of the AAUW. And also, I want to, just a thank you to all the candidates running. There's a lot of communities where they don't get this amount of participation, and I think this is a great thing and a good thing for the city of Faribault. I graduated here in 1996, grew up here, came here in 1st grade, was lucky enough to marry my high school sweetheart, who I started dating my senior year. We have three kids, two daughters have graduated, one's a sophomore at St. Thomas, and one's a freshman down at Grand Canyon University in Phoenix, and I have a 9th grade son. I've been on the school board for eight years. Currently, I serve in the chair role. I've coached basketball for the better part of 20 years at various levels, ever since I graduated from college. I went to Gustavus Adolphus, graduated from there in three and a half years with a degree in financial economics. Today, I serve on the Finance Committee, the Facilities Committee, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, the Negotiations Committee, the Insurance Committee. I think that's enough committees for me. I have really one big goal, if you will, and that is simply to have the best schools we can possibly have within our community, which will allow us to retain the talent that we have in this community and also attract talent from outside of our community. And I don't think we can do that as a community without a sound school system, a sound public school system. So, we appreciate your support. I appreciate your support, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Okay, this is the first question. You get one minute to respond to this question. It's probably the easiest one you're going to get tonight. All right, we'll start with Mr. Bellingham. What is your number-one idea for improving Faribault Public Schools?
Number-one idea of improving Faribault Public Schools would be, obviously, to improve the growth and proficiency of our students in math, reading, science, and social studies. We have enough data there post-COVID that shows that we have work to do to get our kids to be proficient, particularly in reading and math. And to me, that's the utmost important goal right now.
Thank you. Ms. Boudreau.
Thank you. I would agree with John in that respect. I have highlighted the standardized test scores in some of my literature and in some of my concerns. When we have test scores that are really at the bottom, and I understand we have challenges in our district, but I think it gets the attention of many of our district residents, and it gets the attention of the board as well. And I am not saying that this is anyone's fault. I think we all have to work together on it. But if we look at our standardized tests, there's only 20% that are proficient in math, 33% proficient in reading, 24% in science. Our district really must work to improve those academic outcomes and not lower the bar, but try to inspire students to reach their highest potential. The primary, I'm sorry, I'm over my time.
Thank you. Ms. Cavalier.
Of course, I agree that continued focus on reading, writing, and math are incredibly important for our schools. However, right now, we have a team of leaders who are new to the district. We have a new superintendent and several new principals in the district. They're coming off an incredibly difficult, in fact, probably the most difficult challenge of their entire careers as they head into leadership positions. So, right now, I think my number-one goal for this year is supporting Jamie Benty as he works with a team of new leadership in our schools. I want to make sure those leaders feel good about their work, they feel good about the schools, and that they can create school climates where the students in our schools feel good and proud to be there. I'm looking forward to us coming out of some of the challenges we faced during the pandemic, but right now, I think school climate is the number-one thing we need to focus on and support our leaders through that.
Mr. Cross.
Well, my ideas start with life, communication. We need to have communication with the whole district, everybody in the district, including the little kids, to the parents, to the teachers, to the administration. Courtney, still my idea of the new administration. People don't realize that there's only one principal that was there last year. Everybody else on up is new. We do need to give them a chance because we felt that they were the best people in the position. But, you know, so we need to look at that, but we need to, the communication is the key. The test scores are not good, not good. I have ideas how to solve that. I can't publicly say them right now, sorry. Because somebody's going to get fired when it's over, in my opinion. That needs to happen. But basically, communication. Go back to it in life, go back to your job with your kids, with your parents, communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lichtenberg.
My number-one goal is to make Faribault... I know. My number-one goal is to make Faribault School District a place where parents want their students to attend, to bring families back to Faribault, and to have surrounding communities send their kids to Faribault because of our programs and because of our results. I know our test scores look bad, but I also know that we have a lot of challenges, and part of growing is knowing how to use that data to move our students forward. Not everyone is in the same boat. We have EL learners, we have struggling learners, we have people that have been in the community their entire lives, and they're going to show different results for their tests. And we need to take each individual student and help them move forward on their own academic achievement, and that will bring parents to our district.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Okay, my number-one goal is to raise a student achievement proficiency levels. According to the Minnesota Report Card, the Faribault Public Schools in 2018, 38% of students in math, 41.7 in reading, and 36% in science met the standards. In 2022, it was 19.8 students in math, 13.7 in reading, and 24.1% in science met the standards. These statistics are not good. What we need to do is let teachers do what they do best, teach. Teachers and educators are not psychologists or psychiatrists, nor should they be. I think we need to get back to the time when children can experience that glint in the eye that says they got it. It's good for teachers to see that, too. So, that's my number-one goal, to raise those proficiency standards by getting back to the basics. Thank you.
Mr. Wolfe.
Thank you. My number-one goal would be for our school and our staff to make a connection with the students. I don't think you can learn at the rate that we all hope you can if you're not connected with somebody within the school building, in the school district. And I understand there's a whole lot of talk about our test scores, and I want to be brutally honest with you. When I graduated in 1996, Caucasians made up, people that looked like all of us in this room, made up 90, 95%. Today, in our enrollment, Caucasians make up roughly 40%. Somali and Latino, about 25 to 30% each. Now, think of everyone in this room in here. If we went to Germany, China, any other country, and we sat down and we had to take a standardized test in their language on day one, week one, or month one, how would we do? I am being brutally honest when I say that the standardized test score only makes Faribault look poor with all the diversity that we have. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question is number two. Excuse me.
The bottom hasn't.
Oh, yes, thank you very much.
We had a lot of great answers. My number-one priority is building trust between Faribault Public Schools and the community. And the reason I say that is we're in a position right now where we need resources to provide and keep, well, to provide good staff and to keep good staff. We need resources to make sure that we can provide a great education. And to expound on what Chad said, you know, I worked at Cannon Rivers-Dom School during COVID. I saw these kids, some of them vanish for 18 months. We have an extraordinary challenge right now with the test scores, the disparity between students that had support at home and those that didn't. And I think Chad mentioned it really well, you know, we have an influx of immigrants that put a lot of kids at a language disadvantage. If people are focusing only on the test scores, they're missing the point that we need to support our schools, we need to give them the resources they need, and we need to work hard at bringing everyone up to a level of success.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to question number two, and we'll start with Ms. Boudreau. And the question is, what is your position on the school district levy referendum? Do you support it? Why or why not?
Oh, thanks, John. Well, my role, if elected, would be to implement the decision of voters regarding the levy. But of the three-question referendum, renewing the existing levy is an option for voters to consider, strongly consider, as it doesn't further increase their property taxes yet provides over $700 in per pupil funding. This would help reduce expected budget cuts that the board would be looking at in the next, the next school season. What, do we call it a biennium? What do we call it? Anyway, the financial period, and help retain needed programs. We have some excellent programs that could be threatened by reductions. The other two levy questions would increase property taxes, and voters must decide if their budgets can manage an increase. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cavalier.
Yes, I absolutely support the school district's levy, all three questions, and I appreciate Ms. Boudreau just laying them out. It's urgent that the first question passes, and I hope the city will, the people in the city of Faribault will help us pass that. It will actually be devastating to the school district financial situation if we can't renew that levy. The second and third levies do give people choice, and I like that tiered approach. I like the idea that we could go to the voters and ask for support to help us stand aside of our budget cuts with the second question, but that there's also a third question that really asks the voters to consider funding our school districts closer to the level of our neighboring communities that have much more resources than we do through their levies and referendums. So, yes, I support them.
Thank you. Mr. Cross.
I too support all three of the levies. I feel that the people in charge, the board, the people that they had, did the research and feel that this, they must do this to move on. Don't forget, people, that the school district is a business. Unlike all businesses, cost of everything's going up. Problem is, the state's not giving us money. So, what we had here now goes down to here, expenses go up here. Pretty easy to figure out more money has to come in. We are really low. If you look at the thing that was in the paper, I think today, we are really low with paying taxes. Northfield is double, they give double the money to the schools than we do. So, yes, I'm all for them. It's a no-brainer if you look at business. And I've been a businessman most of my life, except my first 17 years, but it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lichtenberg.
I also support all three questions on the levy. I think it's imperative that they pass knowing what is coming. We have some great programs that have been implemented already, and I would hate to see them have to be cut. I like the fact that the Faribault residents have a chance to vote at each level, and I'm very hopeful that all three will pass.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Yes, our school board members answer to voters and taxpayers, and they're the ones who decide whether or not a levy passes. So, it's up to the voters, and I'll follow their lead. My job as a school board member will be to make the best use of the school district funding for our district funding for our children and our teachers in the classroom. I will work with community, the community to bring real solutions to improve outcomes and increase our students' test scores. And as a school board member, before I would ask for a levy, I'd make sure that all of our resources are being used efficiently. And the fact that we have more non-English learners in our system begs, makes the point that it's even more important to get back to the basics. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, I do support all three questions. Today, the state has mandates for us in special education and EL that costs Faribault Public Schools approximately $7 million in unfunded mandates. When you compare ourselves to our peers, which is oftentimes the, the Big Nine schools, we are the lowest in local funding of all Big Nine schools. That's nine communities I think we're comparing ourselves to. At the same token, we have cut $7.4 million out of our budget in the last six years. There is not a lot of stuff to cut that will not impact class sizes and that will not impact programming. Absolutely, Ms. Budrow and Ms. Moore are absolutely right. The vote is up to the community. The school board's job is to make a recommendation, and that's what we've done, the current school board. The community will decide if they support it or they don't support it. I will personally support it, and I hope this community does as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baum.
I also support all three questions on the levy. The main reason, and I think this goes to the community, when we had the levy a couple of years ago, about the seven-period day and the focus on getting our kids, the training for the shop and welding and getting them into a community, a job right away in the community, that levy paid dividends. And we have an opportunity to continue that movement. I've heard a lot of people in the community critical of the schools spending money, and I think they've showed. We've able to, we've been able to spend money responsibly, and I think we need to continue to do that. But we cannot operate this district without the sufficient funds. I do not want to put us in a position where these levies don't pass, and we're cutting programs that are critical to our kids being successful in life.
Thank you. Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. Well, if you go back and look at board meetings, I'm the one who made the motion for the three questions, so I do support all three questions on the levy. When you examine the financial projections of the district for the next five years, it shows that additional revenue is sorely needed to continue our learning opportunities for students, enhance our programs, et cetera. I, like many of you who are retired, I'm on a fixed income. I know things are difficult. I made that motion for all three levy questions because, as many of you have said, I wanted the public to decide when, how much funding they are comfortable with, what they believe our kids and our district needs, and we go from there. We've had clean audits for the past 15, 20 years. I don't believe anything is being used, and again, I will commit and say publicly that I support all three levy questions.
Thank you. The next question will be going to Ms. Cavalier, and that is, the backbone of a strong school district is highly skilled and passionate teachers. What is your plan to attract and retain these professionals in this ever-difficult and competitive climate for teachers?
That's a fabulous question. I appreciate it because I do think very highly of the teachers in our community. I would say there's two key things that we need to pay attention to. First of all, we need to act like we actually do respect our teachers in Faribault. We need to believe in them, and we need to understand that they do nothing but teach the basics over and over and again. They are dedicated to the well-being and the success of all the students in Faribault. They work really, really hard, and I'm really proud of the work they do, especially coming off, coming off this difficult time. Unfortunately, the other thing we have to really talk about is salaries and the competition that our teachers, that, that is out there from other districts when people are looking for jobs. And that's one of the reasons these levies are going to be so crucial for us to pass, so that we can keep the wages in all of our jobs, not just teaching jobs, all of our jobs competitive.
Thank you so much. Mr. Cross.
Well, we're gonna, with the teachers, the teachers are the key, the backbone to the business. Again, I say the school district's a business with them. To get them, more teachers coming from other districts, obviously, we got to get the communication in the, in the district with everybody. So when somebody goes and talks to somebody, the school district's talked up. Right now, it's 50/50 whether, whether somebody says something good or bad about the school district, depending on who you talk to. By changing their culture, by changing the communication, we can recruit teachers. Salary is a big issue. Again, the Big Nine, we're at the bottom of the totem pole, you know? I'm not sure where we've been over the years because I never paid a lot of attention, but being last in anything is not good in my book. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Lichtenberg.
I believe we really have to support our teachers, and we have new administrators in, in each building, and some not brand-new, but they need to be supportive of the teachers and the pairs in the building to, to help give what our students need. We do have a high-needs population that just needs a lot of support, and we need to be there for them when they ask for that. And as a school board member, I would like to back the teachers and back the pairs as they, they come to us for help and just be there for them. I think we have great administrators in place that will mentor our new teachers and also help maintain the consistency of programs from one year to the next.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
I think one of the things that we can support teachers is class sizes. We need to get class sizes that are down because, you know, it's, it's important for teachers to communicate with the children, and if a class size is too big, it's very difficult to do that. I think also we have to let teachers do what they do best, teach. You know, teachers are educators. They are not psychologists or psychiatrists, nor should they be. So we got to get back again to the basics, when children can experience that glint in the eye that says they got it, and it's, this is good for the teachers. I have a, and I don't know if we have time to read this, but there was a teacher I talked to that's, she was a substitute teacher in a junior high class, and she actually helped a student that couldn't read. He was in junior high. And by the time they were done, both of them felt good about themselves. So I think that's important. Thank you.
Mr. Wolf.
I, I think we are battling something we've never battled before in terms of wage competition and also the lack of people going into the teaching profession. I know Mr. Benty one night told us 15, 20 years ago, he applied for a job in Richfield, there were 600 applicants. I'll be honest with you, we're lucky if we get five to 10 applicants for a new, a new teaching position today. That is something that is not the norm, but it's going to take a while to work its way through the course. I'm really excited about the Grow Your Own program, which puts our students on a pathway to teacher if they're interested. I, I think a lot of it goes back to support, not just financial, but support, making sure that our administration supports our staff. And I'll call one thing out, and that's student behavior. We need to make sure that we are doing a good job of, of if there's any issues with that, you know, kind of taking care of business, if you will. So it's a big deal, and it's not only teachers, but also pairs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baum.
If we're going to keep and attract good teachers, I think what Chad said is critical, that, that support of the teacher in the classroom. There is the financial component, and I think right now that is, you know, that goes back to the levy question. If we're going to be able to pay teachers to keep good teachers and to attract good teachers, that's going to be one of the top items. But we need to support our teachers in the classroom. My sister was a teacher. I worked with teachers for 10 years, and they need that support in the classroom with discipline issues, to know that administration has their back. With challenging situations, to know that they have the training, the support, the ability to survive day-to-day. I mean, it is a rough job being a teacher, and if they don't feel like they have support from the administration, that has to be number one.
Thank you. Mr. Bellingham.
I believe the question is attract and retain. Every human resources person's nightmare in this current economy, no. The image of Faribault, I came to Faribault because it's a Big Nine school, and it had a lot of diversity in 1977 with choices in education. I believe Faribault is a very attractive place for people, for people who want to teach to come and teach. Supporting the teachers, teachers are going to go in and teach and do what their curriculum and their scope and sequence said to do, and do, and do a really good job. Overall, I think our community needs to empower teachers, work with them, and again, we, we need to somehow keep and, once we have them here, to retain them, as we have quite a few teachers who leave every year for other districts. It's a competitive market out there.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow.
Thank you for the question. I have been reading some, doing some research on why teachers are leaving the classroom, and there, there has been a survey of the Midwest states as to why they're leaving. As of 650 teachers that left, the overwhelming majority of respondents listed student behavior as their number-one reason for resigning, followed by progressive political activity such as diversity, equity, inclusion, gender identity, CRT, and the last reason was insufficient salaries. So there are three reasons, but the major one was student behavior. While door knocking and trying, trying to reach some people at the doors, that is also a concern that I have heard. Parents are concerned about bullying and discipline, and I feel discipline, bullying, bullying policy should be objective, accountable, and consistent.
Thank you. The next question will go to Mr. Cross. It's kind of a long one. Some local government officials in Faribault have expressed doubts about the ability of citizens to engage in local government policy discussions and decisions. If you are elected to the Faribault Public School Board, would you support a Faribault community conversation and dialogue on how to create a healthy learning environment for all students regardless of race, color, ethnicity, religion, or sex in the Faribault Public Schools? And kind of another question that came along with this is, how could we reduce the friction between different ethnic groups of students and be replaced with an attitude of cooperation and respect? So it's kind of the same thing about people learning to respect all differences and so forth. So how would you respond to that?
Number one, we're going to go back to the communication. We communicate, we can, there's a lot of bad behavior, okay? I'm not saying there isn't. But what we're hearing in the public, and I've been out in the public, too, talking to many people, getting answers I've never even heard of before, but things going on is, remember, folks, there's three sides to every story. Because your son comes home, or your daughter and tells you something happened at school, or your cousin or somebody, doesn't mean it's true, doesn't mean what Mr. Benty is going to tell you is true either. There's always three sides of the story, yours, theirs, and the truth, okay? But I believe that we just, we, the bad behavior has to be taken out of the school district. Chad and I have actually talked about that in the past. I mean, and it's not as easy as people think. You can have some kids that are just bad kids, but you know, eventually, they'll be gone, and the atmosphere will change. Goes with the communication. Simple as that.
Thank you. Ms. Lichtenberg.
Well, that was kind of a complicated question, but my answer is, along with Mike's answer, that we, we need to have expectations of our students, and when they don't meet them, then there are consequences for that. And, and that will create an atmosphere of learning for our students. And was the other part of the question a constitutional governance?
I might have gotten you off a little bit here, but I think the question really comes down to, would you support a Faribault community conversation and dialogue on how to create a healthy learning environment?
Definitely. That was easy.
I was kind of wrong there. Could be against it, yeah. Okay, Ms. Moore.
Yes, I would respond yes as well. I would respond yes as well. I think, as a school board, too, I think we should meet with the public in a forum a few times a year, and letting those in the public set the agenda for the meeting and expressing concerns and asking questions. We wouldn't have the agenda, they would. It would be a nice group conversation, and I think we should do that a couple of times a year to get out there and talk to the public. So, thank you. Yes, I would.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Yes, absolutely. Anything we can do to communicate with the public, the better we are. That comes with a lot of listening. We don't always have the answers, and yes, listening's a big piece of it. I'll give you one small thing. Ms. Freund, I think you spoke about different cultures or diversity or whatever. Real quick, this past year, I coached eighth-grade boys' basketball. My team had 21 players on it. 10 were Caucasian, eight were Somali, one Latino, one Puerto Rican, and one African-American. We had the best dinner of our year when I took 21 students to the Medina Restaurant on Central Avenue, Somali restaurant. And these boys had the time of their life in terms of understanding different cultures. And I think if we want to understand large populations in our community, we have to put ourselves out there and be willing to hear the feedback, good, bad, or indifferent. But we have to have those conversations. So to answer your question, Ms. Freund, absolutely, I would be willing to have those conversations, and I would support them.
Thank you. Mr. Baum.
Well, definitely. I think we have to have the conversations. That's how we build relationships. That's how we figure out the differences between us and find common ground. I think those conversations need to happen, and I think it's a two-way street, you know? The, the Faribault Public Schools, we have to provide the opportunities for those, and but parents in the community have to be interested and be willing to join us. To the differences between the groups of students, I'll go, follow Chad with the sports. I also, I was in the military, US Army. There is a common thing that's mentioned, and we talked about it this year with the sixth-grade football team. We're Falcons. We have that common ground right away, and I think we need to remind students of that, that we're all Faribault residents, we're all Falcons, and to find that common ground to work together. Because, if they focus on the division, we don't come together.
Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. Definitely would support a forum or forums to discuss current issues, as long as it is structured, and people come with solutions and suggestions rather than criticizing or current administrators or kids' behavior and things like that. You come with common sense solutions, but not, I think, at any time. I get lots of emails and calls with suggestions, solutions, whatever, that I pass on to district administration. That's what, that's what it is. As far as getting our cultures to assimilate and work together, it's, it'll take some time, but exposing them to each other's culture is extremely important. Blending, getting to know one another, and again, as Mr. Baum said, we're all Falcons, and that's very important.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow.
Thank you. And your question was about hosting a community conversation. That very recommendation was made to the board by myself and another community member. We met with the former superintendent on some issues, and we felt that parents were not being included in some of the decisions that were made, particularly regarding curriculum and policies. And when those policies in curriculum are important or controversial, it's extremely necessary to have the community be involved in those discussions. And so I would welcome that. I would also welcome that public engagement with parents be more strengthened. We could host informational meetings to update parents and the public on any revenue challenges or on any new curriculum, as well as partner with parents on policy and budget decisions. Respect parents' rights to direct their children's education and be informed of their well-being.
Thank you. Ms. Cavalier.
It sounds like we actually have a lot more in common than you would think, all of us sitting up here together. It's honestly going to take a lot of courage, honesty, and openness for people to bridge differences in conversation, and I think that's really important. I also want to really, as we talk about bringing people together, I want to urge people to be open to learning about what we do in schools. For example, when we talk about words like equity and SEL- For example, when we talk about words like equity and SEL, social emotional learning, I want to make sure people understand that this is about access to learning and access to opportunity. And the way that student achievement improves is when they have access to learning and opportunity, when they learn how to respect each other, when they see adults respecting each other, and when we overall have a positive school climate. These pieces are incredibly crucial in our schools.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Lichtenberg. The question is, parents are an integral part of a child's education. What creative ideas do you have for engaging parents in their child's education?
That has been a challenge for all of the 30 years that I've been in education. Parents want to be involved in their child's classroom, and they want to know what's going on within the school and the district, but to get them to come to district-level committee or something that has an impression that you need to have more educational background than maybe they have, parents get intimidated easily. And so I guess somehow we need to remove that expectation of, that parents need to have some kind of an educational background in order to be part of the conversation. So as much as they want to be involved in their own child's classroom, we could get them involved in the whole district conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Moore.
Yes, one of the things with the parents, I think also an open forum would be good. One of the things though too, from the HYA survey that was done in 2021, one of the issues that I saw, they talked about transparency and with, within the administration and with, you know, just with curriculum and things like that. I think it's very important that there be transparency in the curriculum, what the materials are being taught, and that if a parent can, you know, if they're welcome in the classroom just to visit and listen. I think that's very important, because when you have the transparency, you will have the trust. And if there's a trust relationship, I think then parents will be, would be more attuned to getting involved. So I think transparency is a big issue on that one.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
You know, I think our, one of our traditional ways of communicating with families is through parent-teacher conferences. And once again, as our demographics have changed, I think we might have to somehow tweak that model a bit and not have those be the only communications or the major communications. I'll be honest with you, I've been out talking to a fair amount of people in the last week or so regarding the levy, and it was eye-opening to me, as I was speaking with some of the Somali parents, that they do not read Somali, they do not read English, yet they speak Somali. And now I'm trying to think of, okay, let's say if there's a seventh grade son there, and that's the primary English bearer in that family, how do they, how do we communicate with those parents to make sure that that student is doing well? And I think we have to rethink that whole model, and I don't think we have the exact answer today. More communication's great, but it takes work. Thank you.
Mr. Baum.
It's a, I think LeAnn brought it up. For those that have been in education, getting parents involved has been a challenge for decades. The parents that want to be involved are involved, the parents that don't want to be involved provide a huge challenge to the district. And I think what Chad mentioned is, there's an aspect to involving parents that don't necessarily understand what level they can be involved, that we're asking them to be involved, and there's a challenge to outreach and to being open and accommodating that, I think when you look at resources and opportunities in Faribault, there's a lot of resources and opportunities that a lot of people don't know, and it's getting that communication across is a huge challenge. And I think we need to be open to new ideas and new ways to get those families involved, because a lot of the Somali families want to be involved. I just don't think that they understand the opportunities and methods of being involved.
Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. Frontal involvement and engagement. Many a university has done studies upon studies, I believe I took an undergrad course on how to get parents involved. So is involvement just attending a concert with a little snack afterwards, your child's concert, or is it being involved in the district curriculum committee? Is it being involved in the PTO? Is it being involved as a coaching aspect, a volunteer coach? What degree are we asking people to be involved in their child's education with, there's a time commitment. People are busy nowadays. So I think reaching out to people, saying, here are the opportunities we have, if you are involved in your child's education, whether if you want to know about curriculum, if you want to be involved in the PTO, whatever, again, you must, we must reach out. It's better when you go ask, it's there. So again, as Mr. Cross says, communication within this piece is crucially, very crucial.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow.
Thank you. I know how rewarding it is to be a volunteer in the school district, and as a parent of a third grader, the third grade teacher invited me to take part in that, and I valued that time very much. So I think invitation is important too. But I think there's an issue we really need to mention, and that's trust. I'm feeling there's not a lot of trust between our school district and parents. And I don't know why, but I'm hearing it. I think it may be that right now, there are some concerns about the upcoming curriculum. We don't know what it is, it hasn't been shared with us. Our superintendent mentioned a tremendous expansion of curriculum in this paper, and I don't know what that is. I asked about it, but I wasn't given explanation. So I think trust is an issue. Parents should have their curriculum online so they can see it, see what the materials are, and see what the syllabus is as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cavalier.
Well, I guess I'll use my time to talk a little bit more hopeful. My son's just finished a six-year career at Roosevelt School, and one of our last family fun nights, there were hundreds of people there. There were families from sort of all walks of life in Faribault, and there were families from all ethnic groups, representing language groups. We sat side by side playing bingo, we sat side by side plying principals in the face, and we were having a lot of fun. And I think our schools, especially the elementary schools, and the teachers who plan these kinds of events, the principals who plan these kinds of events are key for bringing together our community. And when we do that well, that's what's going to help as kids get older and enter middle school and high school.
Thank you. Mr. Cross.
Again, we go back to communication, and trust is the big issue with the communication with the public. I mean, my experience, I've been on the STEM School Board, four years, 10 months. My experience is, we've had two people show up from the public in that amount of time. We only hear complaints, we never hear, as Mr. Bellingham said, a solution to the complaint. It's always a complaint. But I believe we got to get the parents involved in the smaller, in the elementary schools and bring them up. I've never missed one of my kids' games, parent conferences, or anything in all the years. And I have kids 37, 36, 20, and 13. And I've been able to juggle it all these years, so. But again, if you don't trust the school district, you're not going to go to anything. And if your complaint's not looked at and constructively taken care of, you're not going to get engaged. Stop, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is, interesting one. What is your position as it relates to censorship of the school curriculum materials and book banning? And we start with Ms. Moore.
That is an issue, can you hear me? I don't believe in censorship, because this is unconstitutional. However, I do believe what should be banned in our schools is pornography. And what was the other part of the question again? I'm sorry.
Is book banning and censorship of the school curriculum materials?
Okay. Like I said, I don't believe in censorship, this is unconstitutional, but we should ban pornography. And as far as the curriculum, I think, I'm not sure what you mean by banning, but I think the public and the parents especially should have, should be able to look at the curriculum and have input. So I guess that's my answer.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf.
Yeah, it's an interesting one. It seems like it's been very politicized unfortunately of late, and to me, that's really sad. To my knowledge, in Faribault public schools, any parent can go in and see the curriculum, students can opt out of curriculum. The real curriculum is set at the state level. And just so people know, when curriculum is set at the state level, it is set at, by the House, the Senate, and the governor. And the last time I checked, we have a divided government up there between Republicans and Democrats. Now, it's interesting, somehow, some way, they have to agree on that. And yet, we want to make it political at a local school board level. It makes no sense to me. If you really want to get after somebody, go to St. Paul and talk to them. We follow the directions of what that curriculum has passed at the state level. And so it's unfortunate that it's become so politicized. Once again, parents can come in, we have a district advisory that is always looking for people from the community to participate and volunteer on. Anybody in here is welcome to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Mr. Baum.
I'm going to thank Chad for saving me a bunch of time there. I think there is an onus on the state there for curriculum. When it comes to information about what my children are being taught and what my children have the opportunity to read in schools, I'm a Papa Bear. These are my kids. Until they're 18, I have a responsibility to raise them the way I feel is important, and I think that is critical in the schools, and I think the schools need to support that from the curriculum standpoint and providing transparency. But when it comes to banning books, I know there are many instances, and who's at fault? I don't want to point fingers, but if there's a book that shouldn't be read by a young student in a school, that book shouldn't be there. I mean, I feel very strongly about that as a parent of three kids in the school. There are topics that should not be in our library, they're not educational-based, they shouldn't be there.
Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. Curriculum scope and sequence and standards and benchmarks are, as Mr. Wolf said, are set by the Minnesota Department of Education. It is fault, it's listed in every department exactly what those standards are, what the benchmarks are, how they are going to achieve them, lesson suggestions, et cetera. Again, and I'll echo what Mr. Wolf said, for, to bring up that a curriculum is being developed or there's pornography in any of this curriculum statewide is horrendous to suggest that. You're politicizing that, it just isn't so. So, again, our curriculum is set by the state. As far as book banning, we've had librarians in the years past which go through and order books and have books within their library, which those books are reviewed, et cetera, all the time. Here, reviewed for students to check out and make sure they are appropriate within the school system. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow.
As far as politicizing curriculum, I think that is happening, but it's not happening at the legislature, it's happening by the governor and his appointed board, and especially with their new social study standards. I'm not sure they've been approved yet, but they're not good. They're totally, totally critical race theory, and people don't know what that is, but that's what this paper is telling me it is. And I could explain them, but I don't know, I will just say that the new standards will embed basic Marxist principles and practices such as critical race theory, fluid sexual identity, and gender politics into all Minnesota schools. This is required for every teacher as they learn to be a teacher and as they are a teacher now. They would have to go back and get this learned and get it on part of their record. It's wrong.
Ms. Cavalier.
I believe in the work of our state educators, and I believe in the work of our teachers and our librarians and our administrators. They go through significant time learning how to do what they do, they spend years studying what they study, and there's a significant process, a multi-year process with opportunities, multiple opportunities for review and feedback as we develop standards in Minnesota Department of Education. In all my years as a parent and as a teacher, I have never seen anyone teach anything inappropriate. I've never had my children taught anything appropriate, and that certainly isn't happening here in Faribault. Thank you.
Mr. Cross.
Of the censorship of the curriculum, no, I'm not for it. I mean, we talk, people talk about critical race theory. Excuse my language, what the hell is critical race theory? Besides a theory, nobody knows what it is. But it's a big topic, and too many people on the internet listen to what's going on, and all of a sudden, it's in the Faribault school system. I was told it was at the STEM school. I'm the board chair. Is that the STEM school? I think I know. It's not there. It's a myth. Again, like I say, the state does a lot of the mandates on a lot of things. There's things we can do as a district, but the critical race theory thing is just, it's out the door, it's way. Book banning, I trust that we have people in place that do the censorship and make sure that books are appropriate for school, just, you know, not like we had, but thing. A problem with, where people are thinking a lot of things is, they think about, I'm a baby boomer, I'm one of the last of the baby boomers, but you know what? Life isn't the same when I was a kid. Life is way different, and I don't think people realize that so much. Thanks.
Ms. Lichtenberg.
So although the standards and benchmarks are set at the state level, the district does have some leeway when it comes to deciding what curriculum they're going to choose to meet the standards and the benchmarks. So that is part of the district advisory board and the curriculum board, and that's where we try to get parents involved, to come in and hear what the choices are and what concerns there might be, or curriculum that they've heard from other districts are being used in a good manner. So we do have some power at a local level to choose the best curriculum for our own population, but it's still curriculum that's going to meet the state standards and the benchmarks. So if something is out there that is not, that our parents don't appreciate, we would just look at a different curriculum and meet that standard another way.
Thank you. The next question is, and we'll go to Mr. Wolf, what is your position on vouchers or pay to parents to pick their child's school?
Yeah, that's a good question. To be honest with you, I'm not certain I have enough information on it. However, I do believe that a good public school system is a foundation for a solid community and a growing community. And I would ask the question, if we're going to give vouchers for schools, are we going to give vouchers for fire departments and vouchers for police officers as well? And are we going to say that we can pay for a certain road and not a certain road? So I think it's a, it's a difficult question, and I would honestly say I don't have enough information about it. However, if the schools that are going to be able to use vouchers, then I would also assume that they have to then provide all the services that a state school, a state public school would have to as well, and that could be special needs students, that could be the EL and all of that as well. So it's a, it's a complicated topic in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Baum.
For vouchers, I think the focus that I have is, when you look at vouchers, I think it highlights that the state funding for our public school system is flawed. I think vouchers sound good on the surface, but there are, I think as Chad mentioned, there's a lot of details that you have to look for, you know? How is that going to affect whether it's giving that voucher to a STEM school student or to a BA student? How is that funding distributed? There's a lot of details there that would have to be hammered out. But I'd like to drag it back to, we have a fundamental flaw in the way that our state is funding education, even our nation, the unfunded mandates. If, we need to correct those issues first before we get into a voucher system.
Thank you. Mr. Bellingham.
Thank you. I'll just repeat many of the conversations I had with my friends in the parochial school systems. the parochial school systems when I taught and coached there about vouchers. In my opinion, it should be, if there is a voucher system, it should be an equal playing field, meaning all, the education is the same, meaning we have standards and benchmarks which are taught the same in all schools. If you receive a voucher, you would, you would accept all regardless of race, gender, or creed. You would accept, you would make your buildings handicapped accessible, all buildings handicapped accessible. You would educate your own special education kids. You would provide your own, you would pay for your own transportation as Faribault Public Schools pays for the parochial schools' transportation. You would provide your own nursing, speech, all services that the public schools currently do or are mandated by the state. Those entities have to do totally.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow?
I think parents won't have much other choice if our schools, the trend that's happening nationally and in our state with policies of equity and disrupting the primary purpose of education in our nation, our state, and our district. The Faribault School Board has adopted equity policies that promote learning through an equity lens, which are likely to create an atmosphere of confusion, division, and uncertainty. Some say this is not happening. But resources invested in equity teams and training confirm the groundwork has been laid. Some of the sources, resources used by the school district is Midwestern Plains Equity Assistance Center. These are their little newsletters. Student-led activism, disrupting institutional oppression, engaging teachers in social justice. I can go on. I have many of their pamphlets. These are where our teachers and staff is being trained. Denying we're not doing this is very frustrating. I don't know when the lever is going to be pulled because they're holding off.
Ms. Cavalier?
No, I don't support vouchers. I appreciate that in Minnesota, families have school choice and can look to districts and open enroll if they feel like they need to move to a different school district for their, their own reasons. I won't repeat what, what my colleagues have said about the services that a public school district provides to all students regardless of their ability or their socioeconomic status or their race, gender. I'm incredibly proud that equity is one of the school district's main strategies as we try to make sure the Faribault Public Schools is a district where all students can feel welcomed and access opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
I'll agree. I'm not, not for him in any way. Basic comes down to, you as the public have a chance in November to change what's going to happen in the state. The state funding is low. Kick those people out, get some people up there in the state that can get the funding we need. We don't have to have a voucher system. It's as simple as that. I mean, the choice is in the hands of the public right now to make changes in the school district, obviously, the city, the sheriff, everybody. But the state, the boys up there in St. Paul are the ones that are wrecking the whole school system. That needs a change.
Slitenberg?
As a school board member, whether there were vouchers for schools, it wouldn't be our decision. We would just have to react to it. I would, I would like to push our efforts toward having more targeted schools in Faribault, maybe like a language immersion school or STEM school. So parents could make a choice within our district. And if it did come to a voucher system, we don't have to be competitive and we would have to be in the same ballpark so that parents would choose our schools to come to. So that would be the bottom line, is to be competitive with them.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, with vouchers, I think parents have the right to choose where their child goes to school. I think if a school is doing what it's supposed to do, back to the basics and the achievement, I think people will choose public schools. And I will say that CRT isn't our public schools. It's here. Critical race theory and equity are very similar in their ideology and end results. Equity is not the same as equality. Equity is tied to the term social justice. And this is a quote from CPL Action. Equity means equal outcomes, which is very different from equal opportunities. Social justice demands things be taken from individuals in one identity group and given to another to, in order to achieve equity. Individual achievement, character, and responsibility do not matter. Doesn't take it into account and that is wrong.
Okay, we have one final question. This goes to Ms. Budrow and Ms. Moore. Apparently, some people in the audience need clarification. Do you support the three levy questions or not? So, Ms. Budrow?
I think I've answered that question already.
Maybe you need to just repeat.
I believe I answered the question.
Do you support the three levy questions?
My answer encouraged folks to vote for the renew, for renewing the levy because it does not raise their taxes. And I said the other two questions is really the decision of each individual and their budgets. I encouraged adoption of the existing levy. That indicates I am supporting it. But as far as the others, that's a decision. And I will implement whatever decision the voters have.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, I will say it again. School board members answer to the voters and taxpayers. And they are the ones who decide whether or not to have a levy. So it's up to the voters. My job will be to make sure that the best use of district funding for our children, their teachers in the classrooms. Before I ask for a levy as a school board, I would have to look into the budget. I'll make sure that our resources are being used effectively. And then it just depends. The fact that we have, like I said, excuse me, our resources need to be used effectively. And if they're not, I don't think we should ask for a levy. But I, as for me, my personal opinion, that's really irrelevant because it is up to the voters.
Thank you all very much for giving you very thoughtful answers to the questions the audience asked. It's now time for the final round. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. Please sum up what you want the audience to remember about why you are running for a seat on the Faribault Public Schools, School Board. And so we'll begin with Mr. Baum.
I'm somewhat of a political enthusiast. I love the debate. I love the conversation. I don't say political in the sense of one party versus the other. But over the years of watching politics, one of my main concerns that I've always had is people having the resources and the skills and the knowledge to be able to help make effective decisions. We have a technology levy on the ballot. I've worked in technology all my life. I've worked in K-12 technology. I think I have a skill set that is going to be valuable going forward when we have to deal with tight budgets and effective spending. And I'm also a kind of person, I love the discussion. I'm not here to force my point of view on Faribault. I want to hear your point of view and how we can come to a common ground to make our schools a success.
Thank you. Mr. Bellingham?
Thank you. Well, I'm running to serve the Faribault community. I'm a person who believes in community service. And as Mr. Baum said, to represent Faribault and their thoughts and to do what's best for the kids and the staff, the district, and the community as a whole. Other than that, I'm, I think it's sad that partisan politics come into play here, but it should be about community service, what's best for the district, and we move forward and do what's best for our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Budrow?
Thank you. This is about what's best for our children. It's what's best for the hearts and minds and souls of our children. And our children should be treated in a respectful way and their families should be included in the knowledge of what they're being taught. And I think it's important that parents inquire, ask questions, learn what the curriculum is. That should be the basic question that a parent asks is about their curriculum. That will tell the story of what's being taught. Again, I want to stress that my strengths, that my focus is on academic achievement and putting all of our resources toward that, not getting sidetracked in social issues. That is our biggest strength and will help our children to be responsible adults. Equal opportunities, not equal outcomes, and partnering with parents, giving them information. I thank you for your support on November 8.
Ms. Cavalier?
I'm running because I love this city and I believe in public schools and I believe in public school teachers and I believe in public school students. I believe in all of them, all of the public school students. We must have equity and we must have mental health initiatives in our schools in order for student achievement to improve. That's the bottom line. I would love to spend more time talking with anyone in the audience about the school district's equity initiatives and help clarify and correct some misconceptions. I'm honest, I'm hardworking. I spend a lot of time studying and researching and I want to serve the city again in this role. I hope that I'll have that chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cross?
Yeah, it's been a long, interesting ride so far. But basically, I'm a commonsense voter. I'm not a polished speaker by no means. I have an associate's degree in general studies, but I don't have all the fancy degrees. I need to be the chair on the STEM School because I can't get things done. And I know how to communicate with people. They may not like how I say it, whoever at times, but the deal's there. When I'm done, I'm going to shake their hand. Chad and I might get in an argument. When we're done, we're going to shake hands. If he can have a beer, I'll have a pop.
I'll have a pop, you have a beer.
But I don't want to be left out with Chad and John on the sports. I myself have been a coach for years. I also, I've been a coach for over 27 years in four different states. I just blew my knees out in the air. Thank you very much for your time and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Ms. Lichtenberg?
I have a strong understanding of the current curriculum that is in place, being that I just recently retired. I feel like I'm supportive of our current staff and know where there are some areas that they can be strengthened. And I also realize how many times teachers are asked to add one more thing to their plate, which always means something else has to come off. And I just want to be a voice for teachers and parents so that we can get the best education we can for our Faribault students.
Thank you. Ms. Moore?
Yes, thank you for having us come, come before you today. My, my priorities include academic achievement. We've got to let our teachers get back to the basics. And I will say that social, emotional learning is detracting from this. It's detracting from our resources and our time. Transparency is another thing with the curriculum. What materials are in the classroom? And with transparency, there comes trust. Because if it's not transparent, people in the community aren't going to be trustworthy, aren't going to be, feel that they, they trust the administration and the Faribault Public Schools. One of the things I will say is that, you know, we say, well, this is, it's not a political agenda. Because I ask you, how is getting back to the basics and transparency? How is that related to any political issue? It's not. It's getting back to the basics and transparency. It's not political. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Once again, thank you to members of the audience for spending some time with us tonight. Thank you to the AAUW for hosting. Thank you to the other candidates for attending and answering questions. It's been a privilege to serve Faribault the last eight years, the last two terms, if you will. And Faribault's got a big, big place in my heart. And I bleed green. I'm the president of the Faribault Booster Club. We've raised about $1,003 over the last 12 years, donated all back to the school district. And so we've had great, great support from the, the local businesses and community members and all that. I want to go back to the levies real quick. There's a lot of things we can't do up here if we don't have the funding that we talk about. I think there's a reason why the City Council has come out with a statement of support. I think there's a reason why the Chamber of Commerce has come out with a statement of support. In fact, Nor Johnson is the co-chair of the Vote Yes Levy Campaign. And so it's a big thing. And so once again, my time is up. But thank you all of you for being here tonight. And everybody will appreciate your support.
Thank you. This concludes the 2022 School Board Candidate Forum. The members of AAUW wish to thank the candidates and the live audience for their interest and participation in this forum. The candidate forum has been recorded and will be broadcast on FCTV later this month. This is democracy in action. The persons elected to the school board will determine the quality of the education our children receive. Please note that AAUW is also hosting a candidate forum for the offices of Rice County Sheriff and Rice County Attorney on Thursday, October 20th, 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. in the Faribault City Hall Council Chambers. Remember to vote on November 8. Absentee ballots and early voting are available at the Rice County Auditor's Office at the Rice County Government Center. On behalf of the members of the Faribault branch of AAUW, I wish to thank the candidates again. You guys did a great job of lots of beautiful questions, very wonderful answers. Everyone in the audience and everybody here did a great job. I give you all an A. All right. Thank you and good evening.